I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And it's important to note that today is the day.
Yes, it is.
Remember all of those sacrificed so much on that day in that war? I am ready, Tori.
I'm ready, and I'm ready.
Okay, pending issues for June sixth, twenty twenty four, volume one eleven, page three, forty nine minutes of June fourth.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call Roger.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Fred.
Yes.
Volume one eleven, page three fifty, Bills.
Move to pay bills.
Second.
Roll call Fred.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Um, we are moving to the new volume, volume one twelve, page one, reimbursement of funds to ditch maintenance.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call Fred.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Page two, reimbursement of funds to pipe repair.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call Tim.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Fred.
Yes.
Page three, reimbursement of funds to ditch maintenance.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call Tim.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Fred.
Yes.
Page three, reimbursement of funds to ditch maintenance.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call Fred.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Page four, additional appropriation to cover Memorial Day expenses.
So moved to pay.
Second.
Roll call Fred.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
We have one contract from J F S as an agreement with Morgan Tudor to sign.
So moved. So moved.
Second.
Roll call Fred.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Um, a couple things to discuss, Matt Kramer from Gardner Miller, I forwarded you over email, he's just requesting, um, or he's asking if we should, if we wanna see the cost at twenty six five or thirty one five, the thirty one five includes estimated fees and reimbursables for, I'm assuming the, um, he listed on that email, uh, it's like a twenty five hundred dollar charge and a twenty five hundred dollar charges, they're just estimates, they're not exact.
Yeah, I think, I think they should be included so that we have the full.
So tell him we go with like thirty one five.
They, they, they're not open on recent protection.
And he did mention something, if we went up a little, it might be like a five percent markup or something for the, of some. I'll tell him thirty one five. Tim, I have you, you and, um, Deb and I were talking about the emergency drills and.
Yeah, we're just talking about the, we need to get updates on all of the drills around here, fire drills, tornado drills, naps and, where the sheriff's office can post it and, yeah, I don't know, so, good for, past due probably on all of them, so.
Something to keep in mind and try to get.
I'll contact, uh, Lieutenant Holber, and Sheriff's Office, I think he sets up most of that training to see if he can start working us into a schedule.
Um, would he also, if we were just doing like a tornado drill or a fire drill, we wouldn't need him for that?
No, we'd need him.
Right, Richard or whoever.
Okay. I'll talk to Richard and then we get a new security after this, after tomorrow, upgrades out for the summer.
Oh.
So we'll have a new person in the building for, I think he said nine weeks, seven weeks.
We heard who that'll be, uh, or it'll rotate.
The first one's gonna be Joe Carl.
Okay.
He had already been here, got keys and stuff, but he had training, he was supposed to start this week, but he had training at the sheriff's office, so he'll start next week. Um, the E M A payroll.
Yeah, that, that amount that was in the box, is that our, uh, the budgeted amount that we possibly?
That's what you approved.
Yeah, and that just needs, we just need to approve to.
Correct.
To transfer that. Uh, so moved.
Second.
Roll call Tim.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Fred.
Yes.
Do I need to have her, um, or I do a resolution for, um, transfer of funds?
Yes.
Um, I put Corser Premium on here, I got an email from Corser saying that, um, they showed that we did not pay our premium yet. I contacted Ally because I could not find where I had ever received it, we got it back in March, mid-March, um, so, well, she said it got sent out mid-March, she sent me another one, she said, there's no worries, no late fees, you know, she'll let, let know that we've discussed it and definitely, and we'll just assume as we give out invoice.
Thank you for following that format. Oops. Oh, yeah, I never turned that over, look, signature page, I guess. Well, we give this to that. This kind of came from Randy, didn't it, over at, uh, Ditch?
Let's see if, uh, um, Fred, just to double check, there should be another one that came from the same place, just verify that.
I want to see that one. It's correct. Yeah, I see the difference, yeah, for. Thanks, Tom.
Yep.
What?
I saw the correction on Tuesday's paper. Thank you.
You're welcome. Sometimes my chocolate covered coffee beans aren't enough, I need another, we'll just talk about it in the afternoon, you know?
We're all washed away.
That's what I'm just thinking about. It was all, uh, late. We'll find out.
Yep.
Deb, I'm about to crank from Corso.
Oh.
I will. We have a resolution for the change for the county. Uh? I slipped through it. Like, I slipped by it during time. I don't know why. I see, I see. Well, it was. She was trying to remind this old for now.
No. All right. Good morning, Holly.
Good morning.
How are you today?
Okay, how are you?
Good. Sorry, I'll be here in a second. Thank you. I'm good.
Our logo, Scott's name on it. So we have one on our logo because he added himself to the agenda for you, but it was just this morning.
Hey, Holly, we're ready.
Okay. Um, the first item on the report is the local RLF. Dispersance continue. Um, communication continues and I am still being told that we are on track for an opening date range that was discussed at the closing, so. That's all I know.
That's all you know, yeah.
Good.
So no change?
No change.
Good. No news is good news, huh?
That's, well, as long as there's communication happening.
That's right.
Yeah. I don't mind that there's no news.
Yeah.
Um, Jones Road Industrial site, so been working on the promotional activities for the Jones Road Industrial site design. Uh, last month I said I had ordered it, but I hadn't heard back. It is ready. Um, I think we're gonna pick it up today. It's a four foot by eight foot sign. And I've got money, um, which was included in the grant from Mid-Ohio Energy for the mounting bracket.
Right.
And, uh, Luke said that he would help make sure that we need it oops.
Oh.
Before we put any posts in, that he would coordinate that.
Is that, is that going in the state right of way or?
It'll be probably outside the right of way, but in that corner by the highway.
Interesting, kind of from that situation.
Right, yeah, that's what, I, I am following the advice of the county engineer. Um, yeah, he'll keep me out of trouble, I think. Um, the promotional video has been posted on Zoom Prospector, which is Johns Ohio's statewide, um, real estate site. And we also put it on YouTube. I included, um, the link. Um, if you wanted to see that, you can also go to the Alliance's YouTube channel and find it there. Uh, we premiered that at the last board meeting, so Fred has seen it.
And it's very, if you're really, I, I think it's wonderful.
Thank you. We are able to highlight all the attributes of the site. Um, the rezoning application has been submitted. Thank you to you all and.
Tori for getting that, um, submitted.
And the planning commission meeting, I'm sure you've been notified, is June seventeenth at eight thirty for the rezoning on that. Um, to get it to M two, which is general manufacturing. So June seventeenth at eight thirty AM. Harden Career Task Force? I don't know exactly. Do you know where the?
I think.
Probably across the street. Yeah, probably. I can, I can confirm that, but probably across the street.
Well, I'll see.
Okay. Harden Career Task Force, uh, you know, we've been working on the three E project for the last couple of years. Enrolled, employed, enlisted, and part of that, um, campaign is assigning days. So the goal of the program is to have every single senior, um, decide before they graduate whether they're gonna be enrolled, employed, or enlisted after graduation. And, uh, we have certificates for them near graduation time where they sign, and it has which E they selected, and we celebrate each of the paths that the kids show. So, uh, we had those in Ida USB Kenton in Richmond. Uh, recently did a VRN visit at Ida Technologies, uh, with Johns Ohio. So that was good. Uh, we were able to talk about some of the things that Johns Ohio can do for manufacturers. And, um, I also did a VRN yesterday at McCullough Industries, but we'll probably talk about that next time. They, good news from them, so.
But it's been much well with ATR.
Yep. Yep. They are seeing, um, some changes, um, to their business because of the changes in cars. The, the push-button technology versus, they make transmission parts. And so changing the transmissions in cars is changing their business, so. Something that they are watching closely.
So it was probably the retool of machinery and equipment that they had, correct?
Um, Main.
Will, will give them any more value added and, uh, potentially more jobs or anything like that?
Yeah, I think that, I don't wanna overspeak, but I think that they're exploring possibilities for ways to expand their services. Um, Main Street Kenton, uh, the historic courthouse, the historic partner with, uh, Heritage Ohio. We're really gonna be boots on the ground, recruiting volunteers, and trying to really move things forward in the downtown. And, um, we're working to develop the core committee. Um, we're having, uh, meetings with the subcommittees to get them launched. And then the idea is that this takes some of the pressure off the staff in the long term, but it also creates a team around the staff. Um, and encourage a buy-in from the participants. So some of the initial projects that we're doing, um, I don't know if you have, uh, seen anything about the deals passport, but.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, that's, that's gonna be, um, yeah, good, yes. Um, I think there were fifteen, um, sixteen businesses with eighteen coupons. Just from around the short courthouse district, and then we also listed everybody else in the district. So really trying to encourage foot traffic down here during the construction. There's still other places to park, park and walk, and go shop. Uh, and then also through the Mid-Ohio Energy Grant, we bought ten sandwich board signs. And we're lending them out to businesses that request them. Just to create a more visual, hey, we're open, or, um, in some of the cases, if they have to use a side entrance or a rear entrance. For example, the Sweet Note has pickup at their back door, but her back door is not really well marked. So she should put the signboard out and say, call this number when you get here, and we'll bring your food out, or what have you. Dinner's using the side door when they, um, start the work on Detroit Street. She can put the sandwich board just to really let people know where that entrance is and that shop's open. And those are no cost to the business. And in other news, um, we've been reviewing the website, um, having meetings with members. We have quite a few, especially, um, contractors and builders that like to come in for meetings. And that kind of falls more under economic development. Deb handles more of the traditional member meetings, but those, um, economic development linked, um, businesses I'll meet with. And then working on getting Deb more up to speed. She was, you know, she'll be in training for a while. So that's kind of it in a nutshell for this month.
So, like, yeah, how would she come along?
Well, she's, um, really passionate about serving the members and really listening to how we can help.
You're good.
Taking manor calls.
Yeah. Yeah, and he was, he was hanging out there. He lost the bottom rod. Now, I don't remember where it went. Of course, it was poured down the rain when I was out there checking.
I admire, I admire you taking on that project. I have admiration for that.
Or screaming something. It worked.
That's right. Any other questions for me? We've got executive committee next week.
We have executive next week, yeah.
Make a mention to museum this weekend.
Oh, yeah, I've been seeing, Bart's been sharing that quite a bit.
And the, the two fifty, I think, looking at that.
Yep, and, um, Tabitha said that Tim stopped down. And, and we're gonna talk to the historical society about that, about what they've got cooking. Um, in my mind, my initial thought is partnering with the museum and then maybe seeing if the Harden Freedom Celebration.
Oh, yeah.
Would be interested in being a part of that.
Probably gonna need to bend any hands.
Uh, it seems like the birthday of America would tie into Fourth of July. I know, I know that they're year-long things, but.
Yeah.
But for the Freedom Celebration to be clued in and included. Okay. All right, well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Could you make an extra copy of that extra copy?
I sure can.
Tell you better. It's not bad, yeah. Are you still recording?
Yeah.
Are you gonna keep it online, just like have a conversation in the line?
Oh, well, for the public meeting, I'm gonna keep recording.
Yeah, that's fine, but until then.
I, it's hard when you.
That's fine.
When you stop it and then it's.
We'll catch up.
Yeah.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Yeah, it's, it's. It's good.
In Kenton, the county's. The Jones Road Industrial site is made of one hundred and sixty acres and is in Kenton County's seat of Harden County. Harden County is located in northwest Ohio, about sixty minutes direct from Columbus and from Toledo. This location is referred to as the Heartland region, given that sixty percent of the US population is within five hundred miles. And it is centralized to major US cities with corporate headquarters, retail operations, and manufacturing facilities. Located at the western edge of Kenton, the site is just off State Route three oh nine, one and a half miles from US Route sixty-eight. The location is twenty-six miles from I seventy-five in Lima and fourteen miles from US thirty at Williamstown. It's thirty-three miles to Marysville by State Route thirty-one. The Jones Road Industrial site is completely controlled and is owned by the county commissioners. Available local economic development incentives include the Harden County Local Blue Living Loan Fund. The site is located within the Kenton Buck Township Enterprise Zone and Foreign Trade Zone number one fifty-one. City of Kenton utilities are available at the site, including water with an excess capacity of one million gallons per day. And sewer with an excess capacity of two million gallons per day. Diminishing energy gas lines are present to the site along State Route three oh nine. Electricity to the site is provided by AEP. Service to the site is currently a four kilo volt, three phase distribution circuit with an available capacity of approximately five hundred KVA. The four KV is stepped down from thirty-four point five KV above a half mile away. With a station per circuit capacity of approximately ten MVVA. A CSX transportation rail line runs alone in site's eastern boundary. This rail runs north to Penley and south to Marysville. Spectrum one hundred GBPS fiber is nine hundred feet away, and the site falls within spectrum's auto build footprint. The standard title length for installation is two to one hundred twenty days. The Jones Road Industrial site is generally level with a slope at the northern end. The site's elevation ranges from nine hundred fifty-seven feet to one thousand nineteen feet. Elevation and contour maps are available. A survey of the site was completed in February of twenty twenty-four. The site includes zero percent wetlands. A Phase One environmental assessment was performed in November twenty twenty-three and revealed no evidence of recognized environmental conditions. A sample site plan showing a one hundred thousand square foot building, parking, home retention, and rail spur is available. For more information on the Jones Road Industrial site, contact Harden County Economic Development in the office of the Harden County Chamber and Business Alliance. At four one nine six seven three four one three one, or visit their website at hccba dot com slash economic dash development.
Yeah, pretty good. Nice video, dude.
Right now at five thirty, making milestones.
Okay.
It's my input there. Want me to take that? Mm-hmm.
Did you see that we had an additional add-on to the agenda?
Yes, yeah.
Shower plus ten, if you wanna start.
Alright, so, doing all my research, got all my timeline, going for Harden Hills, okay? And ju- so you said for the closing, the reasons for closing was reduced census, lower Medicaid payouts, rising costs, and the fire pump. Issues would cause like an imminent jeopardy type of thing. And so trying to figure out, um, you know, like what was the thing that like made this like close, like? So, went through, made my little notes and, I mean, I understand like the census was down, right? But we weren't using all the beds, right? There were beds that weren't being used. We sold some beds. We got training there at the end. I think per Van Cress request to get the, the nursing train so that training would bring better MBS ratings, would bring more income type thing, and so, um, that seems like something that could be worked out in my mind. Lower Medicaid payouts, I haven't seen, I mean, I don't know, but I don't see the evidence of the Medicaid. I know there was the Oak Ridge, um, that was up, is a little wonky, um, for the Medicaid payout, which they're still working on. But I, and what I've seen is that Medicaid's paying more, right? They have the, is it the HB fifty-five, you know, type of things? And, and when the Medicaid goes up, then the other room pays have to go up because you can't charge less, you know? So, I mean, we should be staying on track with Medicaid, so I'm not sure, um, of that whole realm of if there really are lower Medicaid payouts. You stated rising costs, right? But when I look at rising co- I mean, everybody, rising costs. But when I look, I mean, we're getting raises every year to, you know, people, like some people are getting twelve percent raises. Sharon's getting eight percent raises every year, you know, so, um, and I find some, somewhere, somebody had said that the, um, the salaries and the, the cost of employment out there was seventy-five percent of the problem of, you know, that cost that's burdening some for Harden Hills. When I'm, you know, if you look at average, you know, they, so the people, when they leave that position, they're paid so much that when they go other places that they have to lower. So, it's like, I feel like per county, you know, maybe we shouldn't have been given such, um, exorbitant raises and that would have lowered kind of that employee cost, so rising cost in that way. And then the fire pump, um, I still don't see it. We didn't, we didn't get a levy put on. Um, you guys didn't ask for an appropriation to pay for the led, the fire pump. You know, they, it wasn't put on as a budgeted item, you know, even though it was known for a long time. So, it's like, I don't see where, you know, when you look at the timeline, you know, I know you guys had the Strata litigation was settled, right? And then you, you know, the next month, you kind of started with real law and starting this whole process of selling, you know, the beds and trying to get, you get in with, I mean, some other people say, oh, but then you get in with Van Cress and you say you want to, um, well, I mean, it's a big problem, right? I'm not saying that this is an easy situation, because it's like, I realize that when the beds are county and then you want to sell them, now you have to do everything that's, um, Ohio licensure things and all these compliance deals and, um, you know, the occupancy and use thing is a big problem. You know, so I realize that this is not an easy process. This has been a tremendous process to try and get to a position of getting Van Cress in to manage so that we can keep the beds and do this whole transition, right? So, I mean, I fully understand that there's a lot of effort that went in to do that. But then, right, so then you end up with, you know, you're ki- you're kind of in with Van Cress, they were coming in, and then that fire pump fails, right? And that changes the whole deal. I haven't, I did request this morning public records on specifically the fire pump, um, you know, where's that document that says that the fire pump actually did go out, right? We have lots of, like, there was a repair of the, I don't remember what it was. In twenty-three, there was a repair of like a dialectic valve or membrane or something like that, right? So, I mean, there was some work on it to get it to limp along, right? So then, you know, what was it actual, the inspection, who did the inspection that said, right, that you had to do the fire watch? Because that's, that was a big thing that, you know, cut everything that, um, because it sounded like Van Cress was on board. Right, able to do all the things and, you know, go along, so, um, you know, so it, so that, you know, I definitely, I feel like there's a timeline, a push for time. You know, so I don't know if that's because of the litigation settlement, that you guys have requirements for that, that you feel that you're on the timeline. Is it a timeline for something to come in, economic development that you guys are working on? So, I guess I don't understand like this push to finish things. I know you said, and you didn't say, Sharon had posted or had said that if Van Cress wasn't going to purchase the beds this year, that you would start, you know, it wasn't them, you know, managing, like they had to purchase that year or else you were like, I think, you know, when I shouldn't say you, because it just says, it's an ambiguous person. So somebody said that if they don't purchase it, right, then you're gonna, we're gonna start the closing procedures. Which then, they came back and was like, signed the management agreement, but then the fire pump. And then they, they backed up. So, you know, so if there's a time push, previously, when we had spoke about it, you said we couldn't, because they asked why we didn't pay to get the fire pump, you know, because we have seemingly money, you know, the one point two million dollars in the P seventeen account. I realize that that's prob, you know, that money might be allocated other places. You know, you don't have full access to the one point two million dollars just to do whatever you want with it. But that is a substantial amount. And so, you, so we asked about that, and you said, because of things that I don't know, right? Like, you don't have the money to fix a fire pump because of things that I don't know. And so after these month and a half, two months of research, I guess I'm asking, what is it that I don't know that is, that has made this such a time crunch? You know, of, you know, not only are we getting ninety days to close the facility, but we, we pushed residents out so that we could lower the census of workers at all that Harden Hills, like, all the utilities and grocery costs, all those are coming down sharply, like, everything's coming down. You know, not just in the ninety days, kind of a nice gradual thing, but like, like really fast, right? So, so what is it that I'm not, what is it that I don't see? You know, especially when at this point, we know that it's going to be very difficult to keep the beds, right? Like, there's just not enough, you're asking ODH to do an extreme, out of the normal process, to license these beds. What, you know, why do we have to close so quickly, is my question? Like, what is, what is it that I don't know that I haven't yet discovered in, in closing it so quickly?
We are under Ohio Department of Health requirements. That's why it's being closed so quickly, that's why the ninety days. And as far as the beds and the way that they're licensed and why they have to be handled, those are ODH requirements. And it has to be done in a certain timeline before the last resident leaves the building. And if you don't have certain things met by that point, then the beds just go away. That's why everything is on such a very tight time schedule and being expedited because of Ohio Department of Health requirements. We have no control over that. We're just trying to meet their requirements.
I'm just going to ask what is specifically your question. I'm having a little difficulty understanding exactly what you want from the question.
Well, the que, so the question would be based off of Roger's comment that we couldn't fix a fire pump for things that I didn't know. So, you know, there, so what I see in my research are things that are mitigatable, right? We can, we can, we could have avoided the high salary costs, we could have done maintenance, we could have researched better training and Medicaid, like, all these things that you're saying was a closing factor. I see possibility of being able to manage those, right? So it's not, I mean, you can use whatever, and whatever reason you want to close the facility, right? So I'm just, I'm asking for the explanation because I don't see, I don't see where taking the seventy-eight beds, which is worth one point two million dollars, to just disappear, right? So that one point two million dollars roughly would just disappear, right? So that's not, so you don't feel like that's a substantial amount of funds that would be good for our community? And to say that when those beds disappear, we are not going to get another nursing home to, to serve as our community? So, when, as an elected officials, right, we, we are entrusting you to put the highest value on the good of our, of our community. So when I say these are the, these are the things that we're losing, based on the things that it would take to mitigate the closing of the facility, I don't see where, I mean, at this point, we're looking at, you may not be able to save those beds by July ninth or tenth, but we very much can keep the facility open, or we could have done things differently to ensure that this value to our community was secured, right? So when I said, when I'm asking like, what is it that I don't know that tell, that will tell me that the value of this for my community is, it, you're, you're telling me this value is not, we don't need it. We don't need the money of the beds, we don't need the nursing home facility because of something that I don't know. Right? There's something that I don't know that is higher than the, a nursing home in our community. Does that make sense? Like, this is all, this is all no money for the beds, no nursing home. Not e, not even one, I know, don't hear me wrong, okay? To say that managing a nursing home, a county nursing home, the way that you have it set up here, is not a picnic, right? To want to get out of that management situation, I understand, right? I understand it is a huge headache, it's not something that should be taken lightly, you know what I'm saying? So I understand getting out of it. What I don't understand is taking away the opportunity to have a nursing home. So there has to be something of greater value than that.
You know, you have, you've gone through your timeline, you have the information.
So I'm not miss, so I mean, I'm not missing anything.
You'll, you'll get, when you get the, the public records request for the fire pump information, you will get all the information that we based our decision on. And we based that decision on what is in the best interest of Harden County overall. And we look at the building, we look at the facility, we look at the economics of it, and we have to make a decision. We make our decision based on that, and we move forward.
Did I just make my question harder for you? Like, I was trying, I was trying to clarify what it was I was asking, but did I do that or did it, do I need to clarify? So, so there's nothing, there's nothing that's not being revealed as far as, I, yeah, I guess I just don't understand. So I know everything that I need to know, like, so when you said that I don't, I don't have some information because of, of the fire pump, like?
You don't, you don't have eight years' worth of information on the facility, how it's operated, what goes into operating it, how inadequate the building is, the expenses exceeding the benefits? And those are not things that I can sit here and tell you, this, 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 this. It's an accumulation of many, many years of what we have seen, what we've gone through, what we've experienced. And let me, let me compare it to, and by no means take this, and I'm trying to make light of this, but this is a good comparison. You have a car, it's fifteen years old, it's got two hundred thousand miles on it, your transmission's going bad. Do you put twenty-five hundred dollars into a transmission in that age of a car? Or do you get a new car? That, that in a very simplified situation is what we have at Harden Hills.
So if, so you're saying to me, I mean, I realize that we've not had a levy for Harden Hills since nineteen ninety-six, ninety-five for the maintenance. So I totally understand, twenty years of, of lack of building maintenance is definitely going to impact the building. What I, what I'm really trying to get at is that you as commissioners feel that the, the funding that comes from the sale of the beds and the potential, the, the very likelihood that we were going to get a brand-new nursing home in our community is not worth wor, it, it's not worth your effort, right? Because you have to put effort in to limp this facility along until we can get the licensures of the beds. So having the money and a, a new facility is not within the interest of our community. Does that state it correctly?
No, we have never said that, we've never made that indication. We are working very hard to get those beds sold so that a new facility can be built.
Right, so is there an update, have you guys received updates from ODH on the process?
No.
So they saw the resolution was signed, but then it goes back to them? Would it, would it be, who are you guys to call them and speak to them on the behalf of the urgency? You have only a month left.
We have an attorney that is taking care of that situation.
And they're contacting ODH on your behalf?
Yes.
And?
And let me assure you, state agencies do not like you to badger them.
No, I know, I know, I know.
That would do more harm than good.
If it comes back that those bed licensures cannot be saved, would you guys very seriously consider rescinding the closing of the building until the beds can be saved?
Not at this point, no.
You don't think that's invaluable? See, that's what I'm saying, because you could rescind the order to close the facility, and the facility would continue with its lowered census until those beds could be secured?
Not without repairing the fire pump.
Well, you have fire watch right now. And when you're doing the fire watch in-house, it is much more affordable than out of house. So if we say, I mean, if you say you have to put another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars into fire watch and limping this facility along to ensure that our community gets a nursing home that it needs, I feel, I feel as a citizen that it is the utmost urgency to do that. So I would, I would ask you guys to consider doing that because it's really just a matter of rescinding the order to close. You know, I'm sure there's lots of paperwork, but you just say, we're not going to close the facility, and it continues to operate, and we can, we can make this process go, and then once the beds are secure, you can do another ninety days, and it can all be, all be good. And that can even be done, I would think, you know, before the, you know, the fall or the end of the year.
And, and how much money do you want the county to invest in that effort? How much money do you think we should spend to do that?
Equal to the amount of money that we spend fighting litigations, equal to the amount of money that we, we would spend on economic development, equal to the amount of money that we as citizens need to have a nursing home that's accessible to our citizens. I don't think you can put a price on it. I think-
Unfortunately, our positions here, we have to put a price on it.
I would, I would even suggest going to the people, making a plea to the people, doing a fundraiser, if that's what it's going to take.
To go operate a nursing facility off of donations.
We could have put a levy on, we could have asked for appropriations of funds. I don't see that those things were considered. So I'm saying from a, a citizen's standpoint, you know, that, you know, you, you've made some very hard decisions for our community over amount of money, and I've seen the bills, I know the amount of money that goes into these litigations, and it's for no real benefit of our community. It is just lawyer costs. So how do we reconcile, how do we reconcile that? When we have no benefit, and in at least this case, we would have benefit to our community. So, I leave you, I don't want to badger you guys, I'll leave you to consider seriously keeping this facility open so we can secure the beds finally in the interest of our community. And I thank you.
Thank you for your concerns. Thank you for your concerns.
How are we doing today?
How are we doing today?
Good, how are you?
Oh, I'm living the dream.
That's good.
Oh, anyways, uh, I want to introduce myself. My name is Scotty Matthews, and I'm currently the director of the Harden County section of the Ty Matthews campaign for, uh, for the Ethan District, and I just came here to introduce myself. Good to know each other, since Ty Matthews is currently away with his military training. Uh, I'm currently, uh, it's, uh, the correspondent for him right now. And so what I'm here to do today is introduce myself, get to know you gentlemen, and to see if you guys need anything, if you have any questions from Ty Matthews, uh, I have a card, business cards with me, I'd like to pass out to you. Uh, so if there's anything at all, since Ty Matthews runs for Ethan District, Harden County is part of that, uh, since he is currently away right now, I'd be the person to talk to, relay messages to him, so I was wondering if you had any questions for me, or for him possibly, you can talk to me, or you can talk to him if you'd like. But since I am right, uh, right now, uh, is I guess head spokesman for Harden County, if there's any meetings, anything that you guys possibly need, who would like to relate to Ty Matthews, um, I'd be happy to help with that, uh, if you need to go to any meetings, stay inside beside, county meetings as well, I'll be there as well, represent Ty Matthews. So if you guys have any questions, I'd be more than happy to hear and try to answer a lot, good, related to Ty.
Well, one thing, um, he's always welcome to attend any of our meetings, just needs to call Deb or Tori and set up a time, but we're, we're always happy to have, uh, our senator, our representative, if he wants in, and so a candidate for that office would be welcome also.
Okay, wait.
I don't know that I've got any specific questions.
I don't either, but I was wondering if you do have a business card?
Oh, yes, sir, I have a couple of business cards for you gentlemen, there, there you go.
Okay, thank you, thank you Scotty.
No problem, I'm a little bit happy.
You go by Scotty or Scott?
Oh, I mostly go by Scott, my name is Scott, but my father always just called me Scotty, so that's what we put on business cards. All right, that works good for me, but just in case if you gentlemen had any more, oh, thank you, questions, I'm more than happy to relate it over to Ty. Uh, again, uh, since I'll be the director of the Harden County section of the campaign, you'll see if you get all, my emails on the cards, my numbers on the cards, time free day and night, whenever you guys have questions, want to meet up or anything like that, coffee, I'm more than happy to do that with you guys. So yeah, anyways, thank you so much, thank you for this time.
Yep, appreciate the stuff, yeah.
It's certainly a pleasure to meet, oh, thank you. And hope you have a good rest of your day.
Got it, thanks.
Absolutely, will have to. Oh, that's long, uh, there you go. Thank you, thank you so much, you too.
Should have asked if they were related, should have asked if they were related.
That is everything on our agenda today.
Very good. Alan, thanks for coming in today.
Yes, no problem.
Kathy?
Good to see your smiling face down there.
Have a good weekend.
I will.
You too.
To mark that as a listing.
Oh, yep. Yes, do you have any more of the, uh, the Friday breakfast this month, you know, or just one month? One more, I think, very much so. Good.
I'll check on the location for that June seventeenth, um, so we can, just to verify a hall.
Good. We'll see you later.
Thank you, good.